Good morning and welcome. Today is January 3rd and it is 9:02. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
I normally go to that one myself, don't I? It's a new year. We're going to ask folks if you are with us and you're willing and you're able to stand as we hear the invocation delivered by Pastor Pam Mason, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, thank you for joining us.
Let us pray. God, we gather at the beginning, the beginning of a brand-new year, the beginning of new possibilities and new accountability. So we ask now, dear God, if you would bless our leadership from our mayor to the city council and every other position within our city, God. We also pray for our communities and our citizens and our relationships, oh, God. Help us to live up to the standard that we have formed, God. We ask you now if you would cloak us in your safety with understanding and discernment. We ask you now, dear God, that you would protect every family, that there will be listening ears through this season, that we would focus on equity, focus on clarity. Now, dear God, we thank you for all of the celebrations that we celebrate together, all of the advancement, but we also, oh, God, put our hands together and work toward making our city, Wichita, a city for all people. We thank you, God, for all humankind. This we declare in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I just wanted you to know that Councilmember Bluebaugh was called out of town unexpectedly, and he is participating by teams, I believe. So he's participating remotely.
Welcome, Councilmember. For the record, please let it show that Councilmember Blue is dismembered by teams. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 27th, 2022.
Does every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, excuse me, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, thou make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk Wilt and all members have cast their vote, and we would ask Councilmember Bluebaugh to go ahead and voice your vote. Upon hitting unmute. Please unmute. There we go.
Aye.
Have received seven yea votes to zero nay, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamations envisioning your future day.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for envisioning your future day, please make your way towards the front.
Hi. I know, it's been a while. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Good.
All right, if you're taking a picture, feel free to utilize this space up here as well. There's some folks who...
About my grandparents today.
Oh, very good. This is Grandma?
Yep, this is Grandma.
Hi, Grandma. Thanks for being here. Of course. Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas committing to everyday life can be a challenge with daily expectations, rules, guidelines, trying to shape us into a box for the future. Together, as a community, we can create an impactful future by empowering one another to envision our futures. And whereas, to make social change, we must create a new mindset and opportunities to empower one another through creativity and conversation. These thoughts and feelings can be introduced through creating vision boards. This allows an individual to use their mind to explore their future through art, words, and crafting. And whereas, creating vision boards allow one to express their leadership qualities by committing to themselves and taking charge of their future, creating a healthy balance by allowing ourselves to be fully dedicated to a day of becoming the best version of ourselves. And whereas, every year on this day, we will celebrate the vision we have for our future, allowing us to think outside the box and suppress the box society tries to fit us in. Let this be a reminder, anyone at any age can take back their life and create the life that they deserve. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim January 3rd, 2023, as envisioning your future day in the city of Wichita, and encourage all residents in our community to commit to confidence, envisioning a more confident you.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. My name is Caitlin Andrus, and I'm a senior at K-State. I compete in Miss Kansas, and so creating this proclamation is really for our youth. I work with a lot of nonprofits, according with the Boys and Girls Club and Habitat for Humanity, and with those children, I have seen the results hand-on-hand, that when you tell them that you can dream, moi, let me tell you, those kids will talk to you all day long. So I really appreciate everything, and thank you, guys. The community means a lot to me. In the past two years, you know, I'm a very communal girl. I have over 5,000 hours of community service. I work alongside seven different communities. I fundraised about $20,000. So I mean, these kids, these communities, they mean a lot to me. So, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Lisa Finch, Andrew Finch.
You have no reason to avoid saying. Is it not the city's executive leadership who has the ultimate decision to end this lawsuit by either scheduling a trial date or settling? Have I been misinformed? If so, is there somebody with more authority that I need to be talking to? Or am I wasting my time? How long has Pig been a representative for the city of Wichita? Do you consider him efficient? Why is he filing motions five years later? Are you aware of the Code of Ordinances, specifically statute 2.04.270? This gives the ability of four council members to override the recommendations of the city manager. Are there not four of you up there with this ability to do so? In 2017, there were a number of deaths attributed to law enforcement in Kansas. All but one of the civil lawsuits pertaining to these deaths has settled. All but one of the criminal cases have been determined. Recently, suspects in homicide cases have been arrested. There has also been an upsurge in gang violence. December 28, 2017, Officer Rapp committed homicide. He had also had a number of referrals to emergency intervention services for excess use of force. Okay, it's my understanding it takes three write-ups to get a referral to EIS. I have no knowledge of Bennett ever charging an officer who's killed someone, whether it be Cedric Lofton, or most recently, the child that was beaten at State South. Rapp commits homicide, and he gets promoted to detective. Law enforcement officers commit acts of violence, and Bennett does not charge them. Wichita is often on the list of being one of the most dangerous, as well as one of the most corrupt cities in America. Most of the other cities on this list have a larger population. In the original filing of Andy's lawsuit in January 2018, there was data stating Wichita had a higher ratio of officer-involved shootings than Chicago and Detroit. Compare those populations. Don't the people of Wichita deserve to be, to have the danger reduced? The same people who elect and pay you to represent them? You just said, what is the future? What's our dream for the future? How about honesty, transparency, and accountability? When I came here today, I was four minutes from going in. The building wasn't open. There had been a number of people ahead of me that was admitted to come in. I'm not talking about the people with the 12-pack of pop that came through the scare that worked there, not those employees, other public citizens. I was withheld from entering the building until the time is right. I needed to be held accountable, I admit that. But how do you pick and choose who's accountable? And how do you explain to those who aren't getting accountability, why not?
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Vivian Martinez, Public Housing Reform.
Mr. Martinez here? All right. I don't see Mr. Martinez. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items 1 through 12.
I'll be pulling item 5, Consent Agenda for Discussion. Council, Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. I will not be pulling item 6, but I would just like to make a comment.
On a consent agenda? Comments on a consent agenda?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to bring awareness to the community that this is for our employee assistance program. I know that mental health in our community and substance abuse is something that's extremely important. It's probably one of the biggest conversations that we're having within the city of Wichita, also our state, and across the nation. And having worked in worksite wellness in the past, before I became a council member, I know that this is a best practice in worksite wellness. So really wanted to applaud our staff in HR, our wellness committee, for understanding the need for this. This provides mental health, substance abuse services for our employees and also their families. So I think not only is this great for the city of Wichita employees, but also really serves as a role model for other work sites across the city. So thank you for all of your work in HR.
Further discussion on a consent agenda with the exception of item 5? All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item 5, 2023 Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force item. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk Wilt and all members cast their vote.
Aye.
Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. We're now on item 5. Item 5 in our agenda packet is titled Fiscal Year 2023 Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force. It's something I support, but the reason why I'm pulling this is a procedural move because we have folks who have approached us yesterday, who said they would like to speak to the council. Now, the way our rules are set up is you normally, if you want to speak in front of the council, you have to sign up in advance. However, because we're in the business of customer service and listening to those we work for, we aren't going to turn people away when they want to come and speak to the council on important matters that are prevalent in this time. So by pulling the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force bill, like, or legislation, like I mentioned, you don't have to talk about that particular item, but now we open it up to talking about enforcement, policing, public safety in general. So if there are folks, and that's, we use a term called germane, which means anything to do with policing is now germane to the topic. So in case folks are wondering why we're doing this, that is why. So now we can open it up, and we can have a conversation, and not just a conversation, but to hear folks who are here today to talk to us about policing. So with that, I'll open up to the public for folks who would like to take five minutes and come and speak to the council. Go ahead and just make your way forward. And how this works, if you're new, once the person has finished speaking, you can just come up afterwards. You don't have to be called on. Basically, I'll stop the public comment once, once everyone's seated. You have five minutes. Your time will be on the, on the screen in front of you, and also if, for some reason, you go over five minutes, I'll let you complete your thought. I'll probably give you a signal, try to get, you know, get things moving. And we ask, the policy asks, when you speak for your name and your address, if you're comfortable giving us your address. So welcome. Thank you for being here.
Most definitely, thank you for having. My name is Desmond Bryant. I live in 639 South Pershing, East Side. I come here to say we have to do better as a city, as leaders, as humans. I seen a video this weekend, it just broke my heart, and I'm not sure if you're aware of this situation, but a man was abusing a young boy. Just to leave titles out of it, it was a man assaulting a boy in a public place, and as a community, as a man, as a father, that saw my son in that same position, I couldn't imagine, you know, what that family is going through, not being able to hear from their son for hours at a time, not knowing if he was dead or alive, not knowing what the update was, and, I don't know, as leaders, as people that can make change, as a voice of the community, I'm just asking for change. We saw what happened with Cedric Lofton, and as a community, we've, I've been updated about the task force and, you know, those updates, but I appreciate all the work that is going into, you know, that issue, but we're coming across that issue yet again, and, you know, by the grace of God, we don't have the same outcome, by the grace of God. But as a community, you know, I'm probably not even going to take up five minutes, but we need to drop those charges on that young man. I work with Progeny, which is a advocacy group that advocates for youth effect about a justice system, and we know firsthand that small cases like this, small instances with the law, if that young man is put on probation, he'll have fines and fees for the rest of his life, which will, could ultimately impact, you know, his progression, just to be a productive member of society. When he turns 18 and he has $5,000 of fines and fees because he had, had to go to court and obtain a public defender, those fees are going to follow him as he goes into his adult life. And how can, when a child is supposed to be focusing on college and getting a trade and, you know, just being productive, but how can he do that if he has to get a minimum wage job because he has to pay off his fines and fees? These are some of the effects that trickle down that we may not think about, that you may or not be able to relate to, but for someone that is just turning 18, trying to be the best person he can be, but he can't because we have to pay off these fines and fees that happened to me when I was 14 years old, because I went to a skating party and was trying to protect my friend. We have to protect our youth, one way or another. I don't have all the answers. Of course, we want to hold that man accountable for those actions because a man should not be able to put his hands on a child and just get away with the scot-free. That's not humane. That's not setting a good example for the community of Wichita. That's not setting a good example for the youth of Wichita. You know, we want to create an atmosphere where youth can respect law enforcement. That is the energy that I would hope that we're, you know, want to have in this place that we call America, the equal opportunity to live and be free in pursuit of happiness. That's in the Constitution. But yeah, it's just, if we can do what we can to lead that young man down a path of freedom, a fresh start, as well as hope that man that was in a enforcement position that night, hold him accountable for his actions because that was inhumane and unimaginable, and it's hard to even put into words, but as well as, with Progeny, we're also advocating for fighting those fines and fees, and if I can get the support of you guys as we continue to push that through legislation, that will be effective as well. So thank y'all for y'all's time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Whipple, for allowing this time. I'm Coach Tracy C. Mason, Sr., of C H D Boxing Club. I am going to use titles. I'm going to use titles because when you have titles, you have a responsibility to be held accountable for your titles, whether they're good or bad. You want credit for being a good officer, but you also need to be held accountable for, for being a terrible officer, a terrible officer, a horrible officer, a monster, a monster. Yes, I use the word monster. The timeline, as a professional business owner, and as someone, as a child that goes to a skating rink to have fun the night of their life, the one time at the end of the year, the end of the year, a skating function for youth to be able to go into a safe environment and to want to be safe, to be able to skate to their heart, their heart's desire. It went from a misunderstanding from a staff member that did not, that did not act professional, that did not treat that child professionally, and cheated that child as if that child was not a human. This is a child, a Wichita, Kansas native child, and this child simply was trying to communicate and did communicate with the staff member and was given permission to do a certain thing. This turned into a monstrous act from a child with possibly a high-pitched voice, but at the same time, we have a title, and it's called a business owner, a staff person, and an officer, two officers, that are supposed to remain professional at all times. They're not supposed to become overly emotional and overly aggressive and monstrous. They're supposed to remain professional. We can go right to the video, but before the video, there was antagonists, as words been said, possibly from both sides, but at the same, again, you all have a professional duty. You're supposed to walk professionally in your life as your duty as city council members. If we see you acting as someone has tried to hold a certain member of our city council for acting a certain way, yes, Councilman Frye, we also should ask professional from our officers to act professional. We can't have selected outrage. We just can't have that. This was a child who should have been treated as such, a child. I don't care what side of the, what side of the room you stand on, whether you're conservative or liberal, Republican or Democrat, Christian or atheist, you're still supposed to treat a human child like a child. You're supposed to contact their parents, which was not done. You're supposed to ask them to stay within professional decor as a boxing coach. I cannot brutalize a child in a combat sport. I have to be professional and coaching-wise to get them to understand discipline. No discipline was practiced by these officers because a child was upset and emotional about a situation, and parents was not, was not contacted. The video in itself, as a combat sport coach, I wish that I could have that officer as my boxer. He threw haymakers to damage that child with control of that child. Notice my voice is becoming emotional, and some people will say, get your emotions under control, Coach Tracy. But we don't have our emotions under control at football games. We don't have our emotions under control at sporting events or entertainment events, so why should my emotions be under control when I see a child being punched like a professional boxer and an MMA fighter in what is called ground and pound? The man had 100 pounds on him. As a professional, as a coach, I know that that is an unfair advantage. Some of you weigh less than me, and people would think it's unfairly that I physically assault you because I have an advantage, a knowing how, been personally trained, like an officer is personally trained, to physically restrain a defender, right? They're professionally trained this, but we seen a very, very unprofessional act. I don't care what happened before that. Let's get the whole story out. That act with two people being turned in, two normal people, both of them were going to jail, and damn sure, the one that was throwing them haymakers, after the haymakers was, was thrown, and the guys, the child faces busted up. This 110-pound child, I weighed him, he's weighed, was slung like a rag doll, just slung. You seen the video. If you haven't seen it, go see it. And then imagine your child being done like that. Your grandson, your granddaughter. Just imagine you being slung under control. If you can, if you can grab someone like that and sling them like you slung, like that, I don't even want to call him an officer because he was not acting within professional standards of code of conduct of officer, officer training. It's called unnecessary use of force. Busted this child's head open. After busting him, throwing him, slanging him up against the wall, instead of telling him, get down, stop, get your hands up, as you are trained as a professional officer to do, he pulled out a can of mace, took his time, aimed it in that child's face who had fear for his life, like Cedric C.J. Lofton feared for his life. The child had fear in his eyes of, oh, my God, I'm getting a crap beat out of me by an officer. Did the child swing on the officer? You swung on the officer, and the officer got complete control. He has so much control now that he can literally pull his can of mace out and not reach for his gun and not reach for his taser and just pull it out with ease, aim, and detained him. So go check the videos out. They have videos inside of the skating rink. These need to be transparent and released to the public because you will see the young child, the young, young girl. child, the, the young, young girl. You will see how she was tackled to the ground. You will see how she was surrounded by not just officers, other people that was just standing around, somebody in all black uniform. So again, my good Councilman Frye, we asked for professional decor from other council members. We also asked for professional core, for professional trained officers to do their professional job. And that job, that was a professional MMA job. I give him credit for that. He did, he did some great MMA moves. I would love to have that officer monster as a boxer in my gym because he got some good haymakers.
Thank you.
What I do ask for, I ask for accountability. I'm sorry, I do get emotional, but I ask for accountability, immediate accountability. I ask for charges to be pressed for those actions, the ones that are video. You don't get to stand your ground after you have control, when the fear for your life is, is resolved. So I ask for accountability, charges being filed, fired, not paid leave, not remanded to a desk job. He needs to be held accountable and the other officer as well. There is another incident that we forget and that was a little girl being, uh, not handcuffed, but just wrestled to the ground and held down again like Cedric C. J. Lofton. And, and fortunately, this time, these two children lived, whereas Cedric was held down for thirty-nine minutes. And again, the city has done nothing about those officers that was involved. A young child again, hundred and thirty pounds was held down by four adults for thirty-nine minutes until that child stopped breathing. And no one is held accountable, not one person. We ought to feel ashamed of ourselves as humans. We ought to feel ashamed of ourselves as Americans to allow children to be treated like ravaged, rabid animals. If we are, then stand on it. Call us that so we'll know where you stand. But if we're humans and we're children, then treat us as such. It's called compassion within your passion. That's all we ask.
Thank you. Next speaker. Welcome.
Good morning to each of you. Um, I'm, I have no title except for, um, my name is Katie Ellis. I've been in Wichita for forty-eight years. Um, I have ten children, ages from thirty-three to four, and I'm coming here on this to speak with the situation that happened. Y'all, these are, these are children, okay? And my heart is speaking to me to say, let's, we, we need to direct our youth to do things better. If, if they, if they mess up, if, if we, we're going to chastise them, let's, let's look at the way that we're going to chastise them. If this person did wrong, this person has no record, let's don't put something on somebody that's going to be a weight on their back. I'm standing on behalf of parents. I'm standing on behalf of my own children because that could have been one of my kids. And, um, I'm not going to take too much time, but my spirit led me to say that, y'all, please, whatever you do, grandchildren, children, look at that and then think about the decision. Let's not just go to zero to one hundred because we all know what type of world we're living in. We all know what type of evil is out here. Let's do better for our children and especially better for the city of Wichita because I'm going to tell you now, um, this video is all over and people are watching and they start talking. And, um, let's show them that this city has resources other than just zero to one hundred on the youth. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Senator, welcome.
Uh, good morning, Mayor Whipple. Uh, Senator Lethifal Skudoe, eleven thirty North Parkwood Lane. Uh, Mayor, uh, City Council Members Frye, Ballard, uh, Blue Boss on line, uh, Vice Mayor, Becky Tuttle, um, um, Councilman Brandon Johnson and Councilman Ho-Hauser, thank you so much. And, um, I, I'm here today. I, I think the last time I was here, Mayor, uh, I shared with you the discrimination that me and my two daughters experienced at, um, Wichita Ballpark at a baseball game, uh, July Fourth celebration. Um, so I can imagine, uh, what was shared or, or experienced, uh, sometimes discrimination. I know how that feels. Also, I want to say, uh, the mayor, the, um, um, Pastor Pamela Mason, thank you for your message this morning. That is my hope too, that we can move forward in a better way. Mayor, council members, I'm here because I don't know how you spent your New Year's Day, but mine was spent receiving phone calls, uh, text messages from individuals sharing the video from the skating rink, the, the incident that occurred. I literally cried. I had a flashback of George Floyd, Cedric Lofton, Trayvon Martin, um, a, a classmate of mine years ago who, uh, experienced the same situation. Um, it just played over and over and I, I, I think I called everybody that I could think of and I could not get through and I called to, uh, be on the agenda today. And of course, uh, the city hall was closed, so I appreciate you allowing us to speak today. Mayor, the ink is not even dry from the, uh, committee meeting, the Corrections and Juvenile Justice Committee that I serve on in Topeka where I made the recommendations, uh, presented by the county commissioners to, um, um, for judicial overview, a stand your ground law to deal with the Cedric Lofton case. That is ongoing and I want to say for the record, in that committee that day, um, it was said by a, um, county commissioner here in Cedric County that the stand your ground law was not a, uh, local issue, it was a state issue. And on the day that I made the recommendations, uh, the fifth, from the fifty-eight recommendations that the county pro- provided to the committee, uh, by Assistant Manager, uh, Russell Leeds, another senator said to me, Senator, this is not a state issue, it's a local issue. And as you've heard from the speakers before, this is an issue about all of us. It's an issue about our children. And I am, today is the, uh, two-year anniversary of the death of my brother who died of COVID. I couldn't do anything about that. But we can prevent incidents of what happened to Cedric Lofton. We can address this issue that I saw, I met the, I met the little guy last night. He's no taller than I am and just a little bitty kid and it just broke my heart. Uh, he's still traumatized. I'm asking that we drop the charges on the young lady and the young man. I'm asking that we utilize some of the funds that you get from this federal level and this state level to create a grief and an emotional, uh, uh, and counseling for some of the kids that, that witnessed that beating, who were traumatized. You know, I hear all, over the news all the time where other children who are not black and brown, they get counseling immediately. We need to offer that to some of these children. And I'm just telling you for the doggone record, my whole life here in the city of Wichita, I've, it's only one time back in nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight where an officer was off, actually convicted and charged of doing something to a black person. I have five black brothers and, 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 and male black cousins and neighbors and I am sick and tired. I wanted to enjoy my New Year's Day. What a way to start the new year. Same old stuff, standing up here, talking to everybody about people dying. It's a shame. It, it's a doggone shame and I'm not the judge and jury, but I'm asking each and one, every one of you in this room, I have called you two, uh, uh, Manager Robert Layton, you didn't answer my call for the first time. Um, I, I said, damn, he's enjoying his New Year's Day and I'm trying to pack to get back up to Topeka to address state issues. And my whole Sunday was ruined. And we cannot, we've got to take attention to this real quick. And Councilwoman Barbara, uh, Ballard, thank you for coming last night at the press conference to stand with us. And so I know, I know how this mother feels back here to, um, I know how Cedric Lofton's, uh, family members feel to lose a loved one. It hurts and it's emotional. And I'm, I, just for the record, I want people to stop saying, get your emotions out of it. Hell, that's all we have. We're doing everything for our children, for our emotions. You know, I have the record of being in Topeka, the angry black woman. And I want, just for the record, I want people to know that black people, it is our culture. I talk with my hands. When I'm passionate and hurt, I get loud, but that does not mean I'm getting ready to beat you up. So you don't have to rush and attack me. And I think that's what those two children were doing, just, you know, that's how kids do, they get loud. And we know by law that you're supposed to have a parent present during an investigation. We, we, we felt this child on so many ways, just like we felt Cedric Lofton. And I'm asking, uh, pleading with you guys to please make this one right. Councilman Frye, and I still need my, uh, Wichita, uh, suit for the Wichita flag suit, so, uh, um, it'll make up for all this. But I called everybody because I felt it was unfair that just because I'm black and I represent a majority of, uh, African-American community, that I got all the calls. So I tried to call all of you too to misery loves company, but I couldn't get in touch with anybody but Mayor, thank you. You took my call, you let me vent, uh, I was crying on the phone. It hurt me so bad. It's emotional. This is personal now. And I'm asking you guys as, um, uh, colleagues, um, and, and I'll boldly anytime with you, uh, uh, Councilwoman Tuttle, love you, thank you. And, um, uh, my District One is still the best district, uh, because that's my district. Thank you so much. Again, I could just go on and on, but I've got to, uh, let other people speak. And again, thank you, Mayor Whipple, for allowing us to speak. Thank you.
Senator, as you leave, I just do want to make a comment that first, thank you for that call on Sunday. Uh, and you're someone who I've served with in a legislature, but you're also my elder and I want you to be able to know that I appreciate those calls and I, I need to be on the phone when something like that is happening in our city. So thank you for picking up the phone and calling me. You were, I think, the first person, uh, of, uh, of authority to call me and, and tell me about the situation. So thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Mia Moore. I'm the mother of the young lady. I prefer to keep my address private, I'll give it to you later, for fear of retaliation on my children. Not only was my daughter there, another daughter and a granddaughter was there who witnessed all of this. I've thought long and hard about whether I wanted to speak to anybody about it. Not my problem, God decided to make me white, my children are brown. I'm going to advocate for all the children. I ask you as our leaders to listen to these people. I was not contacted by the police. I was contacted by one of my other children that was there. I seen the video first, contacted the other mother. We're friends, our children are in somewhat of a relationship. The police laughed when I showed up, I was on my way to work, I turned around, the police laughed. Um, they refused my child medical attention. I was demanding that she be medically cleared before taken to J I A C. They refused. I called J I A C, J I A C said she must be medically cleared. I told the officers and they laughed and they said, yeah, because of Lofton.
Sorry, did you say they laughed?
They laughed. They refused to take her. She sat in the police car for hours in front of the roller city, which I believe needs to be shut down. It's nothing but a hate haven. They didn't treat the children fairly, they never have. They took her to J I A C, four and a half hours later, I was called to say I could finally come and get my child. I got a phone call last night saying that an officer had her knee in my child's neck. Another officer had their knee in my child's back and my child was pleading that she couldn't breathe. Another adult there witnessed all of it. Can share that with, um, my attorney and with you, I'll speak with you later. The witness is scared, um, but she does want to give her account of the situation from the beginning. Like, um, Tracy said, this never should have happened. Yes, they denied, um, a re- they denied a child to come in, they denied a refund, it escalated, they didn't act like adults, they treated my child like an animal, they treated the other child like an animal. This has to be stopped. It has to be stopped. All of this, it's ridiculous. My child is afraid, she doesn't want to go outside, she doesn't want to talk to anybody, she doesn't want to be seen, she's humiliated. These videos have been spread all over social media. They're saying things about me and my parenting, Michaela and her parenting, our children, our children aren't gang members or violent, they're two little scrawny kids. I, in good faith, sent my children to a public place on New Year's Eve to have fun and enjoy themselves and this was the outcome. Please listen to these people in our community, please. We got to do something to protect our kids.
Have you read, ma'am, is it okay if I ask a question? Has your daughter had a chance to file a report or talk to anyone about her side of...
We have chosen not to talk to anyone until today. And so I understand that you wanted to talk to me and you wanted to meet me and I wasn't sure if I wanted to talk to anybody. I'm afraid. So, um, when I picked her up from J I A C, I didn't even get any paperwork. Do you know where I found out what my child's being charged with? On social media, from the news. This is ridiculous. They wouldn't allow us, uh, Michaela, to go to the hospital. I was standing there with him, talking to the young man who calls me mom, um, telling him that I loved him and it was going to be okay and just remain calm and go to the hospital and I have your mom on the phone. The police didn't try to contact any of, the roller city didn't try to contact any of us. My other child and my grandchild that were there called me and said, Mama, come quick, they're beating her. Showing me videos of police just standing around looking through the window. Police just standing there, it's not a joke. This child, when you learn about my child, you will be appalled. I can't speak on it publicly, but I would like to speak on it. She's been through hell and still going through it. I don't know what I can do to help change this. I was born right here in Wichita, sixty-one years ago. This is ridiculous. I was proud of this city. I was proud to say I'm from Wichita, Kansas, little podunk Wichita, Kansas. Today, I'm not. Got to change it. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker. Councilmember Ho-Hauser. Excuse me, Representative, as you approach the, the well, I'm going to get the floor, Councilmember Ho-Hauser, he's on the board. Councilmember Hoheisel, he's on the board. And then when he's concluded, you, you can speak. Uh, councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, ma'am, I appreciate you coming forward and with your story. I know it's not easy. At any point, are you aware of when your child was given a medical checkup? Not, not at all? Not at all? Okay, thank you.
So, and let's just confirm, because she is in the back. So for folks who are listening online, the response was not at all. Child was not, did not receive medical checkup or clearance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, City Manager Bob. Um, I, I know in the CJ Lofton Task Force, the recommendations were that, uh, they go through a mental health checkup before they are, um, processed through JAC. Does that include, uh, checking up on their physical state as well? Was that before the CJ Lofton Task Force or is that something that was written into the, um, the MOU with JAC through the CJ Lofton Task Force?
Councilmember, I'm not quite sure what's in the MOU. And I wanted to get more information regarding this before I would, could respond.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Representative, welcome.
Welcome, Mayor, and, uh, the rest of the members of the, um, City Council. Um, I'd like to thank you for allowing us this opportunity, um, to speak. I could continue, um, as, um, each one of the speakers that has approached the podium has and talked specifically about the details and how things, um, got out of hand and how they looked. But unfortunately, this isn't the first time that these sorts of things have happened. It's not the first time this has taken place. And, uh, for me, as, um, as a state legislator, uh, on the verge of, uh, heading to Topeka to discuss where our funds are most needed, um, I have to question with this, what appears to be systemic behavior in our city's police department. Are we spending those monies, um, correctly, in the right place? I continue to hear, um, these words that say, training, training, training. What kind of training are we receiving? What kind of training are our tax dollars paying for if we continue to get the outcome with those members of the police department that are sworn to serve and protect? If they're not doing what our dollars should be dictating that they're doing? Um, what's taking place, um, City Manager, with our hiring practices? Uh, are we hiring the wrong people? Do we have the wrong training? These are things that need to be looked into. I understand that, uh, here today at this meeting, there's not a lot that we can do. Um, there's a lot, not a lot that the City Council can do, but what we can do, um, uh, as a City Manager, as a City Council, is we can look at what kind of training, um, is this police force, this police force receiving? How are we advancing those within the department? I saw that video. I can safely say that the way that man handled that child, I would be fearful for that individual to be in the presence of any child. Um, I would also be, uh, fearful for that individual to be in the presence of any female, anyone that he felt as though he could take advantage of. And again, as someone mentioned earlier, hide behind, um, the protection and the guise of the badge that he wears and, and the training that he so-called received. I just, um, I, I won't take up much of the council's time, but I know that there are things that, um, that the council and certainly the, uh, City Manager, um, can look into. And, uh, I want to say that, you know, possibly that's where we should start. What are our hiring practices? Where are these individuals coming from? This happens for a city the size of Wichita. This happens far, far too often. There is a breakdown somewhere. And at this point, it's time that we start pointing fingers. I don't know if it's in the City Manager's office, but that's certainly where I'm looking. That's certainly where, uh, my concerns will be, uh, as I go to Topeka and we begin to determine, where these funds really need to go. Are we wasting, uh, are we wasting our taxpayer dollars? I know that there are requests, um, continually for, um, an upgrade to equipment. Things like, uh, bulletproof vest. Those are things that certainly are needed. And they're needed, uh, for the future. But what about today? What about yesterday? There's, there's a lack somewhere. And, uh, again, and to point fingers, I will certainly say it's either in the individual, it's in the department or in the training. And, 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 and I would look directly at you, the City Manager, and say that this is something that, uh, it's been an ongoing issue and it needs to be looked into. And, uh, I'll say that we will be back to, uh, to assess what's being done. You know, this is a travesty and it happens, it happens, um, far too often. And oftentimes they say, you know, if you want to get to the bottom of something, then you need to follow the money. Uh, and that's what I'm here to say, we're, we intend to follow the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who would like to speak? Let's make way to the front. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, good morning. My name is Marquita Atkins. I am at, am I supposed to give my address? 3236 South Silver, Wichita, Kansas, South Side. Um, I am the founder and executive director of Destination Innovation, Inc., which is a hub of youth leadership development. Um, we are home to progeny, which you heard Desmond speak earlier this morning. Cam Destination Innovation that teaches economics and Root the Power that teaches kids civic engagement. I was watching everybody on video as I was driving out here this morning. Um, and my heart was hurting because this is a sentiment we've echoed time and time and time again, and it gets exhausting. Um, I love my city. I was born and raised in Wichita, Kansas. But as I got deeper into the work with youth, um, once you see the underbelly of what happens to these kids, you cannot unsee it. What happened to these young people is a travesty. And we always ask, what's wrong with young people? What's wrong with young people? What can we do to counter young people? I beg you to ask yourselves, what's wrong with us? They mirror what they see. How are we operating as leaders? How are we acting as adults? When you say, when you hear a mother say that her child was bullied or her concern as a parent, she was laughed at. And I know she's not lying because I went through that as a parent with WPD before. And my question to them was simply, what can I do to build a relationship so that when my child is out here interacting with you, the interactions will not be negative? And they laughed at me. How can we expect more of our children than we expect of adults? How can we expect more of our children than we expect of people? They're in positions where they should act accordingly. How can we expect more of our children when they see us online bickering all day long? These young people are savvy. They are not dumb. They are watching everything that we do. They understand politics now. When I was a kid, I had the worldview of my neighborhood. These kids have the worldview and they watch it every single day. They are on to us. We have a responsibility as adults to act and carry ourselves in a way that we want these young people to act like. And if we are doing it, we have no right to look at these kids and ask what's wrong with them. The policies we create, the barriers that we create, the lack of compassion that we have, talking down to them like they don't have a voice in what's going on in their worlds. Adults can be bullies. Those young people at that skating rink got bullied by every single adult there. But we want to ask what's wrong with these young people. It's us. We are the problem. And it's time that we acknowledge that as a city. One of the analogies I have about my city that I love so much and that I advocate hard for because we deserve better and our kids deserve better, is Wichita is a city that likes to throw glitter everywhere. And we all know how hard it is to clean up glitter. It's time for us to take a hard look at the city, move beyond the optics, move beyond the pictures, move beyond the celebration and really take a hard look at who we are as a city. Because it's glaringly obvious that we're not doing everything all the way right. And the outcome is these young people who do not feel safe in this city. As soon as they're 18 years old, they're out of here. And they're taking their talents and they're taking everything they can contribute to the city, to other cities to make them better. What is the quality of life we're giving to our kids? What is the message we send to our kids every single time something like this happens? And it's just a slap on the wrist. We let a child die on our watch and nobody wants to talk about it. I don't care how many policies we create, it will not undo the fact that Cedric Lofton is not here with us anymore and the fact that he died and was murdered on our watch and we did nothing about it. It will not bring that child back. So every single time a child has an interaction with the WPD or anybody in a position of a higher standard, they are fighting for their lives. They are fighting for their lives. We got our kids out here fighting for their lives. They don't trust us. I have conversations with youth every single day. I get calls in the middle of the night every time a child gets profiled. I risk my life and I get up in the middle of the night to go to that stop to make sure that child makes it away alive. That is real life. I'm having conversations with Columbia University. Right now, we're working on what can Kansas do to do restorative justice? Implement restorative justice so we're doing more healing, more techniques that are less about locking our kids up and more about investing in them and giving them the opportunity to become successful. Who were you at 16? What kind of mistakes did you make at 16? Most of us just didn't get caught. These young people deserve second chances. They shouldn't have a mar on their record for going to a skating rink and the adults not being able to handle the situation better than a child. It is not their fault. And I ask of you, the same that Senator Fauscado, drop those charges on those babies, give them healthy alternatives and host something so that this community can heal. Because we still have not healed from Cedric Lofton. We still haven't healed from the numerous deaths that have happened and interactions that have happened. We cannot expect more of these children than we expect of ourselves. Let's do better.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak? It was mentioned a couple of times. So I'm just going to ask, does the council have any authority or input when it comes to municipal charges levied against someone? Or is that outside our control because now it's in the judiciary?
Mayor, Council, um, Jennifer McGoyne, City Attorney. Um, the process for criminal charges is separate from council's role as a governing body?
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right. I'm sorry? My apologies. So our Director of Law, the question was about, that I asked, uh, was about, does the council have the authority to direct charges to be levied or dropped? And the Director of Law, her statement was, uh, were separated as far as the courts and the legislative branch? Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't.
My apologies.
Permit me to step forward again, appreciate your time on this matter because it is a very, uh, sensitive matter. Again, it is a viral video and, uh, we hate for our city to be turned upside down. Can you elaborate, uh, with the time permitted on what you're speaking on? Because it sounds more like, uh, legal mumble jungle, uh, to me, uh, other than, uh, being able to deal with the crust of it. Uh, I do know that, uh, deals are made in the back rooms. I'm not asking for a deal. We're asking for people to have conversations, um, for the right thing to be done. And I know those right things can be done by, uh, people who are in positions of power. Uh, so I don't understand the elaboration when you say it. I understand what you mean by it's in another jurisdiction. It means it's in the judge's hands pretty much. But I do also know that the DA, and most of you probably know the DA, and most of you probably know, uh, magistrates and things of this nature and to be able to speak, uh, common sense.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. And I'll try to address the question and I, I do this with, with respect. My understanding, and Legal can correct me, and my goal is to convey what, what Legal said, uh, more, more easily. The legislative part of our government and then the judiciary part, you run, if, if we as legislative branch, as elected officials, usually there's a firewall up, which is just confirmed. And the purpose of the firewall basically allows us to not weaponize the justice system or use the justice system for particular favors. And that's usually why these, that's a textbook reason why these firewalls are up. So I can't say, hey, our buddy got arrested, let's go ahead and make that go away. I can't press a judge or the prosecution. So we usually respect that wall. And, uh, with the DA, he is actually an elected official, but also he gets to make choices on, um, what to prosecute, what not to. So he has additional powers that us as, in a legislative, uh, environment, we don't have that same authority. And so I was asking Legal to confirm that. And Legal, does that do it justice?
That's correct, Mayor. Um, specifically, City Hortens says, among other things, councilmembers shall refrain from being, uh, participating directly in municipal court citations and that. This is, I believe, not charged in municipal court this time, but, um, that's actually correct, what you said.
Okay. However, Legal tells me that's actually correct. I've exceeded her expectations.
That is correct.
So, uh, and Ms. Spencer, you haven't spoken to this item. So I'll try to, to, to discuss this. The what? I know, I know, I know. But what I'm, I'm going to try to repeat what you just said so you don't have to come to the well and then we could talk. So tell me if I'm being correct. Your question is pertaining to the original statement that you, you made during public forum, which is it the executive leadership of the organization who has, uh, authority over settling cases? That's the question, okay? And to answer that, I, I think the, when, when the legal department and the lawyers, when they go through the process, the elected officials do the final vote on the end of, if there was a settlement or we are normally the, we're not in the, um, I guess, in, in the room when, uh, the, the legal sausage is being made. At the end, we come in afterwards and we help make the ultimate decision on to, to, uh, settle or not. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but it still goes through the process. And then it comes to us towards the end of that process. So we're not involved directly in that process. Uh, that's our legal vote. That's our legal votes. And again, that's usually, that helps preserve that firewall. There's usually ethical reasons for that firewall.
I had a council member tell me that it was council who had the ultimate decision. So I'm upset that I was lied to yet again.
So, and I don't know who said that, but we have the ultimate decision at the end of the process. But we are not part of the legal process until that makes its way through. Does that make, is that correct, Legal? Would you like to add to this?
Mayor, you're correct. Council members, any settlement of the city must be voted on in a public vote before council. So council members have that authority.
As far as participating in that settlement, that usually happens within the legal department. It might have a member of the council as part of that. But we don't actually participate in the making of those settlements. Is that a correct statement? I want to make sure that I'm threading the needle of like, well, we, we're part of the process, but we're here and not here. I'm trying to just, just add these details to help, help folks understand what.
I think you've stated that.
Okay. Thank you. So if there's no further public input on Item Five of our, and again, we got to go back to Item Five. This, we had to bring Item Five up for procedural reasons so that we could take input from the public on the topic of policing in general. So we're going to go back on Item Five and discussion come back to the bench. Is there any discussion? If not, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve continued participation in the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force program, authorize the necessary signatures and approve the individual investigative budgets for FY 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote.
We are reaching for that.
Aye.
Haven't received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Petitions for public improvements.
And as Director Jansen makes his way to the front, I will tell folks that we will continue the rest of our agenda. I'm guessing twenty minutes for the rest of the business on this agenda tops. And then I am and other members will be available if folks want to stick around and talk to us one-on-one. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Councilmember Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. We have a single petition for your consideration today. It's been signed by a hundred percent of the Improvement District and is filed per state statute crossgate edition. And District Four includes a new petition for sanitary sewer improvements. Staff recommend City Council approve the new petition and budget, adopt the new resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. I'm going to be happy to stand for any questions.
Are there questions for staff on this item? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. Discussion back to the bench. Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new petition and budget, adopt the new resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members will cast their vote. Councilmember Blue Ball.
Aye.
Votes aye. Haven't received aye. Seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
All right, moving into Councilmember Appointments and Comments. Hope we can start off with appointments, get that out of the way before we get to comments. Is there any appointments at this time? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to reappoint Bryce Graham to the CSBG Review Committee for District One Low Income Northeast.
Is there further appointments? If there's no further appointments, I'll make a motion to accept that appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote.
Aye.
Haven't received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. We're back on comments. So comments for the good of the body. Just want to say Happy New Year to everyone. And I'm not sure how. I wasn't on an email that said that we didn't have work yesterday. I waited a few guys for a good two hours, three hours. Hats off to the person who forgot to shoot me that email. That was a funny one. I'm kidding. But anyways, good to be back in the new year and hopefully be able to tackle the problems that we face and have decent outcomes. So with that, anyone else like to speak? If not, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their votes.
It just makes me get back after.
Aye.
Haven't received seven yea votes. That motion does pass and we are adjourned. Thank you all.